Hey, welcome to the Antonio Parkinson Project. Today, we're talking about Memphis and Shelby County School Board meeting that everyone is talking about. We're also talking about my Facebook post that about black people solving their own issues and who is Mark White. Also, we're talking to a member of Memphis and Shelby County School Board. She's going to share her thoughts on the meeting and what went wrong and what could be better. So stick around, hit that subscribe button. You're watching the Antonio Parkinson Project. Welcome back to the Antonio Parkinson Project. I am Antonio Parkinson Angelica. What the hell is going on?
I do not know, y'all. It's cra- it's craziness. Everything that could go wrong. You think so?
I think we've been off too long. We've been off for a couple of weeks.
No, I think it's just you. Don't try to pull me into that. No, it's you.
Well, I take full responsibility for it. Hey, here's an example, leaders. Take full responsibility for it, right? I take full responsibility for it. But look, you're watching the fastest growing visual podcast in the Memphis market. Let's give it up for it. Let's try it again. This is the beauty of live TV, right? You know, shit goes wrong sometimes. So, but I think we got, we got the kinks worked out. I don't know what that was though. You know, it was, we did have a, a technical difficulty, right? So, but, but you know, in the segment, you know, we are going to talk about, you know, uh, the Memphis and Shelby County School Board meeting, you know, why we here, how we ended up here. And Rico, let's start that off, uh, you know, run that first video, Rico.
Thank you for joining this special call meeting today. I understand the gravity of what I am about to recommend. And in doing so, I will highlight the reasons for the recommendations. Today, I asked my colleagues on the board to support the removal of Dr. Fagans as superintendent of Memphis Shelby County Schools. After eight months, Dr. Fagans has not demonstrated the transformational leadership critical to the success of the largest school district in Tennessee. Colleagues, we need a leader who sets a vision for the district, collaborates effectively with this board, communicates transparently, and acts with integrity. We have seen a pa- a clear pattern of behavior that undermines these qualities and raises concerns about professional conduct, accountability, and alignment with the best interests of the district. Grant mismanagement. Some clear examples include not being honest with us about it. The United States Department of Education awarded the district $304,000 for homeless students and families. The state has now informed us that due to missed deadlines and incomplete paperwork under Dr. Fagans administration, the funds must be returned. Contrary to the information we have received from state officials, she continues to try to convince the board the grant can be saved. Unapproved financial actions. Recently, Dr. Fagans requested and received, recently, our superintendent requested and received a $45,000 disbursement from school seat. Neither this request nor the grant's approval was brought to the board for review, which is a clear breach of policy. She has deflected the responsibility onto others for this action when it is clear Dr. Fagans made the request. Communication failure regarding her strategic plan. We continue to wait for a comprehensive strategic plan for the district and a full explanation of the district restructuring. Superintendent's failure to provide this plan has caused confusion among parents, staff, and the board.
You're so funny. Shut up. You shut up. Uh-uh, 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 uh-uh. Come on, Bemis. Uh-uh, 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 uh-uh. We're not doing that. No, we're not doing that. We're not doing that.
As a result, we have serious concerns about the direction the Memphis Shelby County Schools are heading. The final example before I ask for the vote to terminate Dr. Fagans' contract is her alleging the employees abused overtime to the tune of $1 million. We asked for evidence to support these allegations. And she has failed to provide this information. Our own research indicates the allegations are baseless. Let me be clear. This is not an easy decision. No one that I am asking you to take lightly. What I am recommending tonight is not going to be popular with some, but we were not elected to make popular decisions. We were, that, we were elected to make decisions in the best interest of students and families we serve. At this pivotal moment, we need a transformational leader who will collaborate effectively with the board and respect governance protocols, keeping students at the center of every decision. It has been alluded that the board has violated the sunshine law and discussed the termination of Dr. Fagans' contract. This has been, there has been no deliberation before this meeting. As the board chair, I've listened to the board's questions and the lack of responses from Dr. Fagans and knew it was time for me to bring this resolution before the board for consideration. I have contacted elected officials at every level of government and longtime partners of the district, and they are in support of the action I'm recommending. At this time, I am recommending today that the board terminate Dr. Fagans' contract based on professional misconduct. I invite my colleagues to move my recommendation and second it to put this item on the floor for discussion and a vote.
You know, the school board, devil's school board chair, Doris Coleman, who laid, made the argument, laid it out why, you know, they were there to terminate Dr. Fagans' contract, right? And so, um, there were several, several things that she laid out. But, but the meeting started out with a bang, you know, as she was trying to lay the stuff out. And you know, with the, you know, the disruptions. And I do have a question too, because you know, I hear a lot of chatter on social media, you know, about, you know, how bad the meeting was. But, and y'all chime in. Who, whose fault was it that the meeting was bad? Was it, was it because of the disruptions? Or was it because of the school board members? Or was it both?
But weren't you, weren't you there?
I was.
So I mean, what was the vibe like? Was it disruptive to you when you was there? Were you entertained? I mean, what, I mean, what was like actually there? Cause I haven't seen no line.
I couldn't hear.
You can hear them on the stage, on the platform? Yeah.
I'm being honest. I'm being honest. Um, I was sitting between the, um, the, the, those that were protesting or those that were there to support Dr. Fagans and, you know, and Dr. Fagans staff. And then, you know, several feet forward from me was, you know, the members of the school board. And, and I honestly, I honestly was having a hard time hearing, um, uh, the members of the school board when they were speaking. Now, interestingly enough, you know, there, you know, the members of the school board that were there to, uh, support Dr. Fagans, I think it was, it was two or three that were there supporting her. And they, they, anytime that they would speak, there were no disruptions. So, so the case was made as to why, you know, Dr. Fagans should not be removed or her contract shouldn't be ended by those members on, on the school board that were there to support her. But when the members on, on the school board that were there to, that were in favor of ending the contracts vote, the, they were disrupted by, by the crowd. And that's, and I, I think that's a fair assumption.
So when they called the meeting, did they, I, I've never been to a meeting, so I'm asking, again, I've never been to a meeting, I'm not from here. Is security usually there to escort people? Because I know, uh, they did say like, if you keep interrupting, we're going to escort you. Is that standard or do they beef up security because they were making such a significant announcement? It wasn't like a regular special call meeting like for contracts.
Right.
They're trying to remove somebody.
Yeah, you know, I tell you, um, you know, there was a lot of security there. Uh, but there were a lot of people there also, you know, so, you know, there were, there were people that filled up the main auditorium. And then there was an overflow room where, where people, where it was full also. And people were watching on, on the television screens. And it was full, but there were a lot of people there. And, and I think the overwhelming support of people that were there were there in support of Dr. Fagans. Right? And so, you know, and so, I, you know, there were, um, um, uh, moments where the, uh, members of the school board were, were trying to read off, uh, some, um, testimony or letters or emails or something, text messages or something that they received from people who were not in favor of, or they're in support of Dr. Fagans. But, you know, a lot of times the, the presentation from the school board, and in fact, every time, the presentation from the school board members were, were drowned out by those in, uh, that were there to support Dr. Fagans.
Yeah, I, I personally, what I feel, I just want to know what came. I've seen everything that they listed that's against her. But like, is there a corrective, okay, they're, they're her boss. But is there a corrective action that leads to this? This is like the end all, you know, this is where you cut ties. But is there like corrective, like we know that you do X, Y, Z, you need to be more transparent? Was, did she get equipped to improve her leadership skills? Or did she had to do a recourse on maybe how grants are handled? Like, was there any kind of correction before, okay, let's terminate you? I guess that's what I'm struggling with. Like, how did you, is there like a step, a jump? I don't know. Again, I'm not taking no side.
I think that's a valid question. I think that's a, that's an incredibly valid question. You know, uh, uh, you know, was there a step up or a tiered approach to disciplinary action?
Yeah.
You know, for, um, for the superintendent?
Yeah.
And, and I didn't see it. I didn't see that. You know, I, I, but again, too, I, and, and I'm not defending anything or, or I'm not taking a position one way or the other, right? Get that look off your face. I'm not taking a position one way or the other. What I, what I am saying is, you know, cause somebody asked me, somebody asked me, they said, they said, you were there. Why didn't you speak up or say something, uh, in the comments like the other elected officials did? Here's one thing, uh, here's one thing I respect, right? I respect the, the, the bodies of the, uh, other elected bodies that are, that are in, inside of Memphis and Shelby County. You know, that, that, that is the, you know, uh, city council, county commission, and you know, the school board. Those are, are, are what I would consider peer legislative bodies. You know, uh, you know, and, and so, I, I, I pushed my, I, I went to vote and I voted for my school board commissioner, right? And so I expect my school board commissioner to represent, you know, the will of our district when she's up there, um, you know, um, doing school board work. And so that is not my, my, that is not my, uh, area, uh, for what I'm elected for.
See, people think different than that.
Right.
They think you have like this power. I mean, we have a transparent relationship, whatever. Um, they think you have this power of like, uh, influence. Yes, your, your body may not be present, but still you, you got the weight and you pushing for the elimination of her to be terminated.
Right, no, no.
And we never had this conversation. This is raw on the camera. I've never rehearsed, I'm trying to tell y'all. He, he looking at me like, what?
No, no, I'm not, I appreciate the question, you know? But I'm, but I'm not pushing for her, her, the end of her contract. I'm not pushing for them to keep her contract. I'm, I'm not pushing one way or the other. I think that is a school board issue. And to that point, which, which we're going to get into it in, into, in the next segment, you know, about my Facebook posts and about, uh, you know, state representative Mark White being pulled into the fray, right? And I just think that local matters should be governed locally, right? One of the things that I fight for more than anything at the state level is to, uh, ensure that those, that the state is not interfering in local issues. And so, and, and you know, we, we want to make sure that's happening. Are we good?
Yeah, we're good. Somebody said it might still be messing up, but go ahead, sorry.
Okay, okay. And so, yeah, and so that's, that's, you know, that's, that's, you know, that's where we are. That's where I am on it. I'm not going to interfere. You know, I'm going to let the, the school board do what they do and, and, you know, and, and, and I believe in my heart of hearts that the school board can work this out.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, whatever way it goes, whatever way it goes, whatever way my, my school board member decides to vote and decides to, you know, how she decides to handle this, I'm, I'm going to support it. Right?
Well, somebody made the comment, the problem was the new school board members and how they presented themselves. Not just the interruptions, it's how they presented themselves during the meeting. That's what somebody said online. I'm just reading the comments.
And that's great. I think that's, that's, that's good that, that, that you're reading those comments. Here's the thing, I do want to know, who do they feel, who do, who do y'all, y'all that are watching? Who do you, who do you, who do you feel disrupted the meeting? Was it the school board members that caused the disruption? What is the, was it the audience that caused, or was it both? And you know, and, and just chime in because I do want to know. I was there. I saw it. I'm not going, I'm not going to try to lead the answer of my, of my version of it, but I want to know what people thought, you know?
Can I give you my thought?
Please.
Yeah, I feel like they both did, but the board.
Qualify that though. Why do you feel like they both did?
Um, just me, based on what I know professionalism is, I was faced, like my mouth was wide open.
Right.
Again, now it's a different culture, whatever. You, you're, you're in a leadership role, okay? These are just, you're, you're the leader. So no matter how other people act, there's a certain poise or position that you should remain in. And sometimes I know some people make you want to click clack and you want to get back with them. But that's one thing about being a leadership, you have to be trained. You can't respond like everybody else.
Yeah.
Dr. Fagans, that's her, huh? She did an excellent job. I'm just saying, as a PR, media, media trained.
Right.
She was beat up for like two hours.
Right.
And when it was her time to speak, she wasn't disrespectful. She didn't interrupt nobody. I mean, you get what I'm saying? Like, I get, so that's expected. So both were disruptive. That's expected, but that's not expected, if that makes sense. Leadership, no, it's not expected.
Right.
In the audience, okay, they, they don't have no rules. They didn't sign the, they didn't get no votes. They didn't ask for the position. That's, that's how I look at it. You just, it just comes with the position.
Yeah.
Sometimes you just got to be quiet.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, uh, because, you know, uh, serving at the state level and you know, it, it's kind of reminiscent of, of what was happening with the Tennessee Three.
I'm sorry, somebody saying they walked off like cowards. I don't know who that is.
But I, I don't think anybody left till after the meeting was over with. So nobody, nobody walked off the meeting. They, they.
The part I've seen, somebody walked off while she still was talking, that Dr., Dr. Fagans. Sorry, I'm so nervous.
Somebody walked off while Dr. Fagans was talking?
I swear, I thought I seen that. I could be lying, y'all. Am I lying? I could be lying. Sorry about lying.
They were all present to the end of the meeting. Yeah.
Everybody.
People get up and, and go to the bathroom and.
Didn't you leave early?
I did not. I did not. I didn't leave.
I seen your hat. Remember I text you, I was like, I see your little hat on the, on the screen.
But that was, the meeting was still going on at that time.
I know. And did you leave early?
I did not.
You just sat in the back?
Uh, no, I, I sat there till the final vote took place.
Oh, you're being petty. Okay, so what he trying to say is the meeting was over when they voted. So that everything after don't matter. Is that what you're trying to say?
The meeting was over and, and they adjourned the meeting and then I left.
Okay, what about the part where Dr. Fagans, I'm so scared of saying y'all? Uh, was speaking at the end, was that over at that point?
It wasn't the end. She spoke in the middle. Yeah, it wasn't.
And nobody walked off the stage?
No, I, I don't, I don't, I don't remember anybody walking off the stage.
Okay, it could be me.
But I, I, and, and you know, and maybe we got it on the video. Maybe we can go back to the video.
I could be wrong. I don't know.
But I don't remember anybody walking off the stage when Dr. Fagans was speaking. Did anybody walk off the stage?
Thank you. God, y'all got me. Thank you. I thought I was tripping. I'm like, Laura, I have one.
No, but, but they came back. The people came back if, if.
I know, but the timing, it doesn't, it's not about what it is, it's about what it looked like.
That's right, because it was, it was to check on, on the school board member Sable Ocho, because she was crying.
I, I know.
Right, it wasn't, it wasn't to walk off the stage before the meeting was over with.
Somebody said you must have been on the phone. I'm not about to play with y'all today, okay? I have these comments, boy, I'm going to read them too.
But look, let's go back through, now, those comments are great. Let's go back through the board. The board, why ain't the comments showing up on mine?
Right, don't be acting like he thinks somebody text me. Nah, I'm on, I'm on live.
Let's go back through the board and the board CEO or executive director roles, right? Because, because you know, it was echoing on the last one. So we got to, we got to, just a little quick siphon class. You know, you know, every form of government that we have is, is set up like that, right? You have a board of directors, you have a, uh, an executive director or a CEO or somebody that sees the day-to-day operation of the organization, right? A lot of businesses are set up like that. You got a board of directors and you got a CEO and so on and so forth. And so, this is the same thing. The Memphis and Shelby County Schools District is, the board members are, that's your board of directors. Their job is oversight, you know, over the, over the, uh, executive director would be the superintendent. And their job is to provide, provide policy for the, the, the school district to be ran by, which is ran by the superintendent. But there, the, the board of directors is the, the employer to the superintendent. So there's a boss, um, employee relationship that's happening.
I got you.
Right? And so, you know, there has to be a, a relationship there, that, a working relationship there that between the two, between the superintendent and the board of directors or the school board, excuse me. Now, there, there apparently something has gone awry in that relationship that these, you know, uh, five members, which is the majority of the board, felt so strong enough, strong or passionate about enough to actually, you know, for there to be a meeting, a public meeting called to talk about this, ending this contract.
That's what I'm amazed by. I'm like, yeah, that's, how, how do we get here? Like, do we, how do we jump those steps?
Yeah, yeah, you know, and, and I, I think that's incredible and important to explore because
I don't know.
You don't just, I just don't see these members waking up, knowing the firestorm that's going to come with this, just arbitrarily saying, hey, we're going to fire the superintendent. There has to be a reason that is not, maybe not as visible to the public that, you know, for them to, uh, you know, make the case to literally terminate the superintendent. Now, go ahead, you were about to say something.
And I, again, I'm not from here, but if I just look at black and white.
You've been here a long time now, so you can stop saying this shit.
Yesterday, I, I still was shocked. I was like, what? Because I was still shocked. I'm sorry, but you right. I've been here long enough. I should, yeah, but anyways. But still, looking black and white, it still wasn't, and maybe because you call me Polly Pearheart. It still is not enough. I feel like, and I'm not in the position, because I know this life for people always, they always could tell you had to do your job until they got to do your job too. So I will give, you know, the board members that. But to in here, I feel, I believe in grace and mercy. So it's like, you're in a position for eight months, okay? Eight months, even in a regular job, and I can cite a quote, I'll give you the, whatever, the resource or my quote of where I'm getting this number from. Like, most leadership, people in leaderships and like an executive level feel like they're not comfortable in their role at least for 12 months. That's coming into a normal situation.
It's called norming.
Yes, like.
It's called norming. It's weighing the two.
Yeah, it's like, so even me, I got, I got, I feel like I'm a messed up, do some things wrong.
Man, you mess up all the time.
I mess up all the time. And I was like, I want grace, whatever. I'm going to, but I want to say this, but, but we want grace and mercy for things because we're human. And I'm sure everybody on that board done made mistakes that we need grace and mercy for. But it's like, we're, and we could be missing these conversations. That's what I'm saying. Because again, we don't, we're not privy to all information. We can only give what's given to us.
Right.
So, is there corrective action? Did they, she know like, okay, you got one more grant to mess up or not run by this board? You got one more time? Or this is a corrective action? Was there really some type of working to make sure she, or his support to be in that role? Cause how did we get here? Cause I guess, I, I've had a team of people now saying that it's that level. But I always look at self. I say, if my team is really messing up or this person is really doing this, let me look at my leadership. Maybe there's something I can do better. I always look at self and what I can do.
Right.
But did anybody look at self? I'm just asking. I don't know. I don't know. I ain't taking no sides. I ain't saying yes or no. I'm just asking a question. I'm asking a question. I don't know.
I think, I think it's a valid question and, and, and you know, we're actually going to get the answer to that. We do have, uh, a school board member here that's going to, uh, you know, talk us through that so we can understand fully. But before we get to that, when we come back, uh, we're going to talk about the press conference that took place, uh, on the following day. Who was invited to that press conference and what they were asking for? So be sure to hit that like and subscribe button, hit that share button. As a matter of fact, you're watching the Antonio Parkinson Project. Don't go anywhere.
Hey, it's Senator London Lamar, and you're watching the Antonio Parkinson Project.
Welcome back to the Antonio Parkinson Project. You're watching the fastest growing visual podcast in the Memphis market. Come on, Angelica, let's give it up for them.
Yeah.
Man, y'all, I don't know what was happening with this podcast earlier, man. The devil was lying.
A whole lie, a whole lie.
Yeah, Angelica got her, her Eskimo coat on.
It's cold. Memphis, like, ask the water, we need a sponsor this weekend. I'm having to eat in here. Can y'all sponsor us a check?
Man, look, y'all, y'all please give her for my lovely co-host Angelica Jellybooth in the building, man. So much, so appreciate her.
That's all y'all got?
Boy, they, they tight on these, on these applause today. Golly, Angelica, it's a tough crowd.
It is. This comment is even tougher, y'all. Y'all got me ticked. I think somebody called you a bear in this comment. Cause somebody put it as a GIF, somebody put it as a GIF, which bear is he? I want to see.
Oh, there's a bunch of comments on here. Y'all, thank y'all for tuning in and thank y'all for watching. Since y'all are tuning in, y'all make sure y'all hit that like button. As a matter of fact, this is a good time to hit the share button.
Share it.
Share this with your friends and let them, because we want to hear, hear from y'all. And, and we truly appreciate each and every person that is tuning in, each and every person that is watching. You know, so, so look, let's talk about this press conference now. So there was a press conference held at, at Memphis Lift, uh, headquarters the following day after the school board meeting. Here is some of what was said at that press conference. Rico, run that video. All set. All right. All right.
All right, live TV, live TV.
So obviously, we don't have that video queued up, but we will, it will be in post. So, uh, at the press conference, there were a lot of people at the press conference. And, um, and, uh, you know, but, but, and, and they were laying out.
Were you there?
No, I was not there. I was not invited.
I heard everybody was invited.
Were you invited?
Well, I'm not nobody.
Oh, look, see.
I'm nobody. All the Democrats were invited.
Oh, what Democrats?
I don't know. That's what I was told. I told you I did my research when I came up.
And you said all the Democrats were invited?
Uh-huh, and there was a press release that was sent out.
Yeah, did you get it?
Uh, no.
Okay.
I'm not on, I'm not on distribution list.
Right, right. Thank you, thank you. And, 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 and.
No, it was on the news that there was going to be an open.
Those are your kid folks.
Oh, oh, yeah. No, I got, I got it off, I got it from chat GPT.
Okay, so, so there, there was a press conference, uh, and, and shout out to everybody in Memphis Lift. You know, I have no, no ill will with, with, with people from, with the, the team at Memphis Lift. And, you know, I don't think they have any ill will towards me, you know? But, but this is something that's definitely worthy of talking about. Uh, so, you know, there was a press conference at the Memphis Lift headquarters and in North Memphis and, you know, and a lot of people spoke. A lot of people spoke, and I think the, the majority of them spoke in support of, uh, Dr. Fagans', uh, you know, contract not being, um, um, terminated, right? And, 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 you know, and, and, and it's the same, it's the same individuals that were also, um, at the, uh, school board meeting and, and, you know, and, and that were, um, very vocal at the school board meeting. And, and so, uh, some people, somebody saying that not vocal disruptive, right?
Which line, which one you on?
But I don't know which one I'm on. But, uh, but anyway, so, so, you know, they, they held a press conference. And, and, and in that press conference, one of the things that, that, that struck a lot of people was the fact that they invited, uh, state representative Mark White.
See, I heard he wasn't invited. He wasn't invited. That's what I heard.
Right, well, he don't, he don't just, well, okay.
I could only, I'm going to do the other side.
Right, I understand that. You saying that state representative Mark White was not invited.
He was, he asked to come.
But I can tell you this, Mark White does not show up in Hyde Park, uh, unannounced, just because he loves Hyde Park.
Shelby Memphis Board takeover bill. Did you see the press conference? You public school advocates opposing that?
Here we are, standing in solidarity, saying no to Mark White's proposal. We don't want to say take over. They won't have any constituents.
We've had a good meeting with Memphis Shelby County School Board. We're going to the team board.
But this resident work, I'll take you over the board?
The GOP done for us, like, why would we want them coming in and appointing anybody to anything for us?
Is your bill still going to take over the board and give Bill these six appointments?
I just, I just met with the Memphis City School Board. Uh, we're talking for 30 days to see if we can't come to some agreements, because we got to change things in our community.
This is the subtle, terrible, uh, hijacking their hospital takeover.
Did you see that people were connecting the dots between the Memphis Board takeover and the TSU takeover? And it seemed like there was this meddling of this 99% white super majority in these black-led boards.
We have white Republican leaders coming in.
There is a pattern in this state to go after black leadership, to feed the narrative. There is a pattern in this state to go after black leadership, to feed the narrative that black leaders aren't capable of managing.
Do you see that connection?
Uh, no, because I've been working on this for years, uh, no connection there, and I'm really tired of that rhetoric. We're trying to do what's best for our state and all of our children.
Do you think they're tired of being overreached into by a majority white legislature?
Well, that's, that's a fallacy.
Not, not true. Is it my misinterpretation?
It's all, I'm from Memphis. People in Memphis know what we need in order to fix the causes of problems. The Republican super majority has demonstrated a clear bias and prejudice against Memphis, against our local leaders, and against black leadership throughout the state of Tennessee and lower. We have to stand up against this way of government.
I understand that you may have some concerns about opening it up statewide to every student as opposed to students that may be more away.
Well, as we go through the process, I want to make sure that the students who have the need, like the parents today, make sure that they're taken care of first. But I think eventually, if, if, moving forward, if this is something that, uh, you know, may do well, we'll, we'll look into it. But right now, this first year is about the students with a certain incentive level.
I mean, it's two years. I mean, is two years enough to decide that everybody should get it?
I think that's the discussion we're having in the general assembly.
But how do you feel about it right now?
I mean, do you see the votes there?
As y'all know, it's a challenge. Every time you make change, it's a challenge. Uh, we, we worked very hard on the Hamilton County.
Well, I mean, I mean, that wasn't, that wasn't, it, it, it wasn't necessarily petty.
That's him.
Um, you know, that is, uh, who, you know, um, Mark White is. You know, and so, and so, you know, my, you know, the thing is, and so, so here's the thing. Uh, State Representative Mark White, I, and, and let me, let me, let me, let me make sure I'm clear on this. State Representative Mark White, one of the nicest guys you'll ever meet, right? But he is definitely, um, based on his action and his legislative, uh, agenda, is definitely for the privatization of education, especially specifically when it comes to Shelby County schools.
Okay, what does that mean?
Thank you. I'm, I'm glad you asked. Yeah, no, that's fine, that's fine. So let, let, let's go back. Let's give, let's give a little historical context. So, um, um, you know, a lot of people don't realize, don't know that Memphis Lift was created out of, um, the, uh, Achievement School District, uh, wanting to create a street team to, to have, uh, people go, basically go door to door and, and pass out their flyers and talk to parents about, um, you know, the conversion of public schools to private school, I mean, to charter schools under the Achievement School District, the state-run school district. Now, let's talk about the state-run school district. This is important for people to know. Uh, the state-run school district was created, and they, they initially said, we're going to take the bottom 5% of schools and move them to the top 25% of schools in five years. Right, yeah. And so, it sounded, it sounds great. Does it not? Does it not? It sounds great, right?
It's feasible, I don't.
Well, you know, we later realized that if that was the case, then Shelby County schools would have done it. Right, but, but, so, so they created this Achievement School District, the state-run school district, and the school district, the Achievement School District failed miserably with basically, now I think we are at probably anywhere between 1.5 and 1.8 billion dollars invested in this failed experiment.
You said billion?
Billion with a B.
Oh, okay.
Invested in this failed experiment. So they then, um, and, and believe it or not, uh, you know, where the Memphis Lift is, is it was, you know, part of my district, right? So these were my constituents before redistricting. Then this, uh, organization, or some of the people from the organization were used to target, you know, those elected officials that, um, uh, didn't agree with, you know, what was going on with the Achievement School District. I was one of the main targets. Um, uh, outside money came in, you know, uh, Republican money came in into the state. I was the number one target for removal from my seat, and this is probably about eight years ago, eight years ago or so? Eight years ago, I was the number one target for my seat, for removal from my seat. And, and, and there, I think there was, uh, about 100, I want to say either $150,000 or $175,000 that was sent into the state for my removal.
How much money?
And, and, and there, and, and one of the members of Memphis Lift, Johnny Hutton, was the person that ran against me. Right, and so, and, and, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not tripping, I'm not, I don't have any hard feelings about that, honestly. No, no, Sharika, that's, that's, that's real true history. Yeah, and, and I don't have any hard feelings about that. I'm not tripping, because you know, we're good now, but, but I went through, at that time, I went through all of the same stuff that, you know, I'm seeing today, right? If I give you an example, the, the, uh, you know, at, in, in the committee meetings up there at the state, where Mark White, Representative Mark White was the chair, right? There were the same types of disruptions in those committees, right? And, 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 you know, and some of that angst and that energy was directed at me, honestly. You know, uh, and, you know, I sometimes be out in public and some of that energy was directed at me. But, but these are my people, though. So I don't trip, right? You know, we, we'll get through it, but, but we're not going to call, we're not going to call Mark White in to solve our problems. There, you know, regardless of whether or not we vehemently disagree, you know, myself and members of Memphis Lift, you know, whether or not we vehemently disagree, at the end of the day, they're my people and I am their people, right? And so, you know, I just believe that we, as a people, should not be calling in, you know, someone else to solve our problems.
They didn't call him in. They said he asked to come in. I gotta get him, look.
Okay, I mean, you know, maybe, maybe, maybe that's the case, I don't know. But, you know, but I can say this, he doesn't normally or regularly roam the streets of North Memphis, you know, uh, on, on his own, or he doesn't volunteer to come in there, you know, or, or, you know, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, i- if they called him in or if they didn't, it doesn't matter.
So the private, so there will be, if this is passed, there will be no more public schools in? That's my main question.
So, so the private, yeah, so the privatization of education, right? The Achievement School District was one where the goal was, and the goal has been, to just, you know, make charter schools, which are private entities owned by hedge fund owners, right? None of, most of them don't look like us. They're, they're owned and backed by hedge fund owners. And they, they, they come in and, and they, they were converting the private schools to, I mean, the public schools to charter schools, right? Those that were supposed to be in the bottom 5%. Now, here's where, here's where I figured, I figured out, because I was on board at first, right? I was the biggest supporter for the Achievement School District. When I opened, I helped open the doors in the Fraser community for the then Superintendent Chris Barbick, when he, when he came into the market. I was supportive, right? Because I thought it was a great idea. We're going to take the bottom 5% of schools and move them to the top 25% in five years. These are my children, right? And so I want them to go to the top 25%, but, but it, it did not, I think that was just the marketing and the, the public relations and the spin, right? And then here's where I learned, where I learned that, wait a minute, this is not what y'all said y'all were going to do. You got a bottom, watch this, y'all follow me on this. You got a bottom 5% of schools, right? And the schools, you got, so you got the schools that at the top of the bottom 5% that are about to roll off, maybe become the bottom 6%, but they're not in the bottom 5 anymore. They're not the target. Then you got the schools that are at the bottom of the bottom. One of those schools was Henley. So I'm giving you an example. Henley at the bottom, let's say Raleigh-Egypt at the top, right? And so now, Henley only has the capacity for 200 students, right? Raleigh-Egypt has the capacity for 1,500. The, those charter schools, charter management organizations were coming in, and they were choosing the cash cows. I said, why are they, and, and I didn't understand it, right? I said, why are they skipping the schools that needed the most? Henley in Orange Mound needs the most help. It's the bottom of the bottom 5%. Raleigh-Egypt is about to roll off of the, the bottom 5% on its own, right? Why are they trying to choose Raleigh-Egypt instead of going after the school that needs the most help? And then I found out they were receiving $10,500 per head. And I said, wait a minute.
How many people go to school?
Hold up, y'all, hold on, hold on. They're receiving $10,500 per black and brown child. So, so now it makes sense to me why you're not going after the school that needed the most, which is Henley, and, and that only has 200 students, because if you multiply 200 times, times $10,500, what's that? Uh, two.
Fifty seven thousand. So, uh, close to $300,000?
Right, close to $300,000, 2.5, yeah, somewhere around at $250,000. That wasn't enough money for them. So now, let's not get Henley. They need it the most, though. Let's not go get them. Let's go get Raleigh-Egypt, who has 1,000 students, but the capacity for 1,500. Now, let's do the math. 1,000 students times $10,500 per head is 1.5 million dollars. And so I was like, wait a minute. So this is not really about education. This is about a money grab and, and the wholesaling or the commercialization or the, um, uh, the auctioning or selling of black and brown kids at $10,500 per head.
I feel like we need a break. This is too much information. I don't learn a lot right now. That's what I said. They don't learn a lot.
And so, and so, and so, yeah, and so when I understood that, I was like, holy shit, I've been on the wrong side of this. And so when I started.
Oh, you, you, you needed some grace?
I did need some grace, absolutely.
You needed some mercy?
I need grace all the time.
Okay.
Right, and so when I realized, when I realized, wait a minute, this, this is a problem, right? This is not even about education. It's about selling kids, right? And, and, and so then I became the, the most ardent, um, uh, and myself and, and School Board Commissioner Stephanie Love became the most ardent, um, people to push back against the wholesaling of our kids through the state-run Achievement School District, which has, watch this, though. The state-run school district has underperformed the schools that they took over. Yeah, about 90%. So, so now, so not only are you selling these kids to these charter management organizations, but you are also underperforming the schools that you took over. Now, watch this. If they were overperforming the schools that they took over, my point would be mute. It's nothing, what can I say? What can I say, the, uh, uh, to this, this charter school that came in and took over the school if they are outperforming the school that they took over?
If they delivering or something.
But, but the aggravated effect of the takeovers was they were not, they were underperforming the schools that they took.
And getting money.
And getting money. And getting money. So when I became, when I was pushed against the Achievement School District, Memphis Lift came after me. And, and so, and, and I ain't tripping, y'all. I promise you, I promise you, this is, I do, I'm just being honest and laying out the historical context about why we're here and what we seen. So I saw all of that, the, 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 you know, the, the energy in, in committee meetings was because they would, they would bust them up to the Capitol, right? They would bust them up to the Capitol, and, and, and they would come in, come into my office. Yeah, and, and I didn't mind. I, I've always been welcoming and accommodating for them to come into my office, for people to come into my, they can come in, I'm not, I know, one thing, one thing about me is you're going to learn, is if you put hate mail on my posts, I'm not going to delete it. If you put, if you, if you have an issue or something you think that I'm doing wrong and I need to fix it, I'm going to listen to it, right? Uh, but, but, you know, I, I, if, if I, if I feel like I'm in truth, I'm going to, I'm going to be honest with the truth too, right? And, and, and again, let me be clear, y'all. We have, myself and, and, and the members of Memphis Lift, I think we have a great uncut relationship, you know, to where we can be honest and have come and say.
They want to know, is this about Memphis Lift or about the, about the, uh, school district, the matter at hand?
We have to give, and thank you for that, we have to give historical context, so you understand how we got to where we are. So the, and my point is, is that this is not any, this is what we're, what we're seeing in, in the school board meeting is not anything new that I haven't already seen.
Been done before.
Been done before.
So you're saying history is repeating itself?
I'm saying, I'm saying that history is, um, is, I'm saying that, that it's the same tactics. Let me say it like that. Now, the, now, when, I, I never forget this, and, and, and see, listen, the stuff I say is stuff that I've already told the people that I'm saying it about, right? I never forget when, when, when there was the same type of energy and that was at the school board meeting, up there in a, in a committee meeting. And that committee meeting was being chaired by State Representative Mark White. There were people busting in the door, there were people shouting the, the speakers down, there were people, you know, um, you know, same thing we saw in the school board meeting. And I, and I'd never forget, I told Mark White this, and I would love Mark White to come on the show, and he abat for this, I'm sure, because he, he, I think he's, I think he has, he's honest, right? I, I, I told Mark White this, I said, I said, Chairman White, I said, Mark, and me and Mark White got a good relationship, I think, we, we, he, they know, he know I'm going to give him the uncut version, happy, right? I said, listen, I said, you're embarrassing me. He said, what do you mean? You're embarrassing me when you allow black folks to come up here to this committee and, and, and act a fool, right? I said, if you know what, what, what was going on in this committee, this disruption, you would never, ever allow people to do that. But because they were on the same side of the issue with you, you allowed my people to come up here and look crazy by yelling and shouting speakers down in the committee room and, and being outside the committee room and shouting folks down. If this was happening with something you were on the other side of, you would have had them escorted out or thrown out of the Capitol. And, and I'm saying that to say this, not because of, you know, their position. I'm saying this, do not allow, because you getting a kick out of it and you're on the winning side of it, my people to come up here and act a fool and embarrass me as a black person. And, 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 you know, and you're allowing it, and you wouldn't allow it if it was white folks doing it.
So are you saying, are you saying you embarrassed?
I'm saying that while it was convenient for him, he was allowing the, the disruptions in his committee to happen. That's what I'm saying.
Oh, I think it's time for a break. Oh, I don't learn too much.
Yeah, and so, and so, and so I'm saying that to say that, you know, regardless of, I need to read this, I need to read this, 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 this message, or this, uh, my Facebook post before we, we go to break. Because this is important for the context of this segment, right, when we talk about.
Yeah, because the comments are asking, do you got something against white people? Is it black and white issue?
Oh, I love that. Thank you. Absolutely not. It's my people. And so is that a white person or a black person saying that?
This ain't no black, oh, this ain't no black and white problem, sorry.
Yes, it is, and I'm, I'm, I'm about to put it in context for you why it is a black and white problem.
I'm talking about the, the state rep coming down here.
Yes.
Okay.
Is it a black person or a white person asking that question? That's important to put in context, because.
It's, but, but I think everybody on this group message is black, okay? It's safe to say everybody black.
Okay, so here, here's the thing, here's the thing, right? You know, so I said, I said on my Facebook post, and, and y'all can go back and look at it, I said, just so I'm clear, you know, you have an, an internal family disagreement with the black folks, right? This majority of the school board is black, right? The superintendent is black. The people that, that are, were there in protest or in support of the superintendent are black, right? The, the majority, the majority, right? And then you go and get the white Republican, State Representative Mark White, who is leading the decimation of the public school system for support. I'm, I'm open, y'all. And so, and, and here's why I'm saying, here's why this is, is a, is a couple of issues with this. One, we, we, you know, we have the ability to solve the problem ourselves, number one. Number two, State Representative Mark White, who I love, this is my guy, right? He is leading, I don't agree with him policy-wise at all. He is leading the death, decimation of the Memphis and Shelby County schools. Through what? You ask. I'm glad you asked. He was the architect and the leader in the push for the Achievement School District. 1.5 billion to 1.8 billion taxpayer dollars dumped into that shitshow, the Achievement School District, and it has failed an entire class of black kids.
Wow. Wow.
Right? He is the leader and the architect, carrying the governor's message for vouchers that would take money from our children in the public schools and give it to private schools. Now, i- in, in, in the states that, in Ohio where vouchers is the law, sixty-five percent of the people that have received vouchers already had their kids in public schools. I mean, private schools. Already had their kids, let me say that again. In states that have vouchers as the law, sixty-five percent, I'm talking about Ohio specifically, sixty-five percent of those students that received vouchers already had their children in private schools. So what they got was a coupon to send their children to school when they could already afford it. Think about what I'm saying. So where they're saying that the vouchers are gonna go to those that need vouchers and, and, you know, black kids and this, that, and another. Sixty-five percent of them that received the vouchers in these states, they already had their kids in private schools before vouchers came. They were paying for it.
They not expected like that.
So, so now, now, the, the, the stacking of the school board, adding more members to the school board so that they can drive the school district in the direction that the state wants the school district to go. Mark White led the push. So my question is.
Politics is too messy for me, I'm sorry.
Why would we, uh, uh, align with Mark White to solve this problem when we have the people ourselves that can solve this problem? Here's the last thing I'm gonna say before we go to break, is this. You know, white folks are always telling us, nah, y'all gotta pull yourself up by your bootstraps, right? But then, when we pull, and when I say, hey, we can solve our own problems, that's us pulling us ourselves up by our bootstraps. Our own people go out and get white folks to solve the problem, as if we are not capable. Let me ask this, I'm gonna leave this question as we go into break. Mark White, who, my guy, I like him. He lives in Germantown. When have you ever seen the school board of Germantown or the city of Germantown come to the city of Memphis, get a black person to come and solve their internal fight? We'll be right back. Hit that like, hit that subscribe button. You're watching the Antonio Parkinson Project. Mic check, mic check, one, two, three. Mic check, this your boy, Piltight MJG.
Yeah, man, and it's your dog, Big Ball.
Y'all know what this is. This the Antonio Parkinson Project. You hear me? Welcome back to the Antonio Parkinson Project. I am Antonio Parkinson, and you're watching the fastest-growing visual podcast in the Memphis market. Let's give it up for the Antonio.
Man, I'm gonna hurt time like this, man. It never ever is.
It took us two tries.
That's why it took so long. I guess we.
Man, listen, man, look, shout out to everybody that's watching, y'all. Please hit the share button. And, um, uh, make sure you share this cuz this is good information. And, and it's pure, it's coming, it's, it's pure information. We're not trying to, you know, throw anybody under the bus, or we're not trying to, you know, uh, destroy anybody's credibility. We're just being honest in the conversation. And, and I'm hoping that we can get some of the other folks, you know, that are on the other side of this on our next show so that we can, you know, give them an opportunity to, to speak. But part of the reason.
That is a question, that is a good question.
Excuse me.
He's the chairman of.
Wait a minute, hold that, hold that question. Part of the reason why we're coming from this vantage point on this show is because we, we couldn't clearly hear or, uh, the positions of the school board members was not clearly articulated because of the disruptions, right? And so we want to be able to clearly understand why school board members took the position that they took. And with that being said, I do wanna introduce our next guest. Y'all give it up for School Board Commissioner Stephanie Love. Let's make some good support.
Yeah, I wanna know why, too.
Right, right. And before, School Board Commissioner Stephanie Love, before we come to you, uh, let me ask Angelica, Angelica, go ahead and ask that question. What was the question?
It, it, I think it's from Mark, about Mark State Rep Mike.
Who is it from? Who's asking the question?
Jason.
Okay. Jason Sharif?
Yeah, Sharif, yep. He's the chairman of the Education Committee, but isn't Senator Akabari, am I saying that right?
Senator Agbar.
Akabari, I always say people name wrong. On the Education Committee, too, why can't she be involved as well, I think, into the conversation at Memphis Lift, maybe?
Yeah, well, that's, that's a really good question.
Is she on the committee?
She's on the Education Committee in the Senate. Uh, I can't, hey, Jason, I can't, I can't speak to Senator Agbar's politics. You know, um, I can only speak to mine. I can't even speak to the school board members' politics. I can only speak to mine. And so, you know, uh, that's a good question, and I think you should ask that directly. Um, you know, uh, about, you know, where, where Senator Agbar is on all this. But, but here's something to that point, though, Jason, is that, you know, it is eerily quiet from a lot of elected officials on this matter, and this matter matters.
Not you.
Huh? Right. Uh, and, and I'm not, I'm not being quiet about it, but I'm also, at the same time, making sure that I stay back far enough so that the school board can make his whole decision without my interference.
I have a question. What do you say to the people that call you messy for even having this podcast today?
You know, I, I say that, you know, they're wrong. I say that, you know, this is, um, uh, this is, you know, um, you know, number one, number one, here, here's the thing, right? Watch this, watch this. I would ask those same people how they felt when, um, uh, the Tennessee Three were being ejected from the Tennessee State Capitol because they wanted to say something. And now, if you supported the Tennessee Three and, and their voice is not being muted, then you should support this show and so that, you know, everyone's voice can be heard. I have a voice also. But I also have a platform called the Antonio Parkinson Project that you will never, ever be able to mute. So, 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 so now, let's give it up one more time for our School Board Commissioner. Stephanie Love is in the building, yes. Yes. Man, I'm tired, too. Shit, I'm tired, I'm gonna go to sleep, and I still got another event to go to this evening. So, School Board Commissioner Stephanie Love, how did we get here?
Oh, Lord, I'm nervous.
I want to start off saying that I second the vote for the superintendent to, um, be the superintendent of Shelby County School. She is the superintendent and we are the governing body. She has to listen to us. And we have to listen to her. This is a family. I'm not here to bash the superintendent because I am a woman first or my other board members. We all have a common goal. But I did agree with the resolution. That is why I voted for.
So, I asked the question earlier.
It's the soul for me.
Cuz now I can get the answer. How do we end up here? Like, I don't know if, can you talk about? Do they get corrected? Cuz you've been on the board for a long time. How long have you been on the board?
Eleven years.
Eleven years. And is she the first person that has caused like a issue or not listening or grant, I'm, I'm doing a recap. Grant mess-ups or, uh, not communicating, uh, transformational leadership. Everybody's been a good leader. They done grant right, they have had, needed, they haven't made no mistakes.
No.
Okay. Do you get correct?
They listen.
Okay. All right. Is there any, and you just.
What does that mean, though? They listen? What, what do you mean by that?
When the board members talk to them, they listen.
Okay.
And, uh, when George Ray was the superintendent, he made some, uh, moves that the board did not like, and we created a policy for that. No superintendent has, uh, creates a position without the board members knowing.
So there was a position created?
Yeah.
See, that, that never been, there was not a chance to say, that's not even on the list. Oh, okay.
So I think what she's saying is George Ray was creating a, a position or positions, right? And that would a- a- affect the budget of the school board, correct? And so when he was creating these positions, he was creating them without approval from the school board, so.
He had the budget lined out. He was not stealing money or mismanaging money.
Right.
He had the line out, but we didn't know about it. The governing body didn't know about it.
Got you.
Okay, yeah.
But is there any corrective action? Like, can you say, hey, if you don't listen, if you don't do these things, it's gonna lead up to this? Cuz from looking outside in, it is like, it was like an element of surprise. She, she actually stated during the, the, that day, saying she found out with everybody else, like the media. Like, she found out with the rest of the world that she was being caught, I, I'm just, I'm not inside and I gotta do this cuz.
You don't get disclaimer to ask the question.
I, I need disclaimers.
You don't get that clip?
I'm not firm, I don't know. But she felt, she found out with everybody else, so it's like, it's almost like you're getting fired, but your boss gonna give you a chance to make it right. You get what I'm saying? Like, no, you just fired. So was there a chance to make it right? And how was she not notified? And she was notified with Eric, the rest of the media. Well, we, well, we, I guess.
We can't deliberate. We can only deliberate in public. And that was the chance to, uh, to have all nine of us give our opinions.
So you can't have like private chamber conversations?
No.
You have to have everything in the presence of a, a, a public, a public meeting. But with the forty-five thousand dollars, this wasn't the first time. They brought it up in the November meeting, too, correct? Okay.
So what about the forty-five thousand dollars?
I don't know, with school seed money, and I think during the, the November meeting, they brought it up, and she says she had to get with leadership, when I watched some of the clips. Cuz it's, it's public little, you watched online. She brought up that she didn't have time to like, she wanted to get with the people that was over on her team, pretty much. Because under leadership, there's people that handle certain things. She's not physically doing finances or writing grants. There's people on her team that can do it. So it could be oversight, I don't know.
Yeah, well, let's, let's.
That was brought up in a previous meeting.
Right.
Then, you know, the next meeting, that was one of the things she did wrong.
Right.
Was there enough time to correct? Or, that's what I'm saying, like, it was, it was like the nineteenth, and then this meeting was, what that?
So, so we, we got the superintendent, we got video. Let, Rico, let's go to that video with the superintendent, uh, making her case for why her contract shouldn't be terminated.
So first, thank you for your support. It's unfortunate that we're here for this matter, but thank you for showing up and demonstrating, just how important not just this decision, but the, the stakes are high. Um, the status of education, but certainly with Memphis Shelby County Schools, could not be any higher than they are right now. I have said time and time again, if I'm ever the barrier, I would leave. No one would have to dismiss me. No one can hold me more accountable and to higher standards than I hold myself. I have yet to see this resolution. I've heard it read to me this evening. But what I have heard is meritless, is baseless. I've been transparent about it and can refute every single thing that has been stated. I want to be very clear that what I shared about overtime, I provided at least three years of data to the board that has never been reported before, and as several board members have shared with me, much of my information, my desire to be transparent, has been weaponized against me. I'm not a victim. I came to do a job that I was called to do, that I responded to do, and we've been doing it well with a team that has not stopped running since day one. To be here is not even about me. It's about the people that are sitting out in front of me that have risen, that shared just today that I don't know if I would be the leader that I am today if you did not push us. I don't know that we would look at things the way that we have been if you were not here. Everybody on my team, take me off. There's more than one hundred years of experience. The historical knowledge can't be defeated. No one on my team, with the exception of one, knew me outside of this. I didn't go outside of Memphis to take care of Memphis. To talk about a grant that we never received, I was incredibly honest. We missed the deadline. I don't pursue grants, but I did take the honest because everything sits with the superintendent. The grant deadline was September thirtieth. Funds had to be obligated. Obligated means there's an executed contract or a purchase order. The item was submitted to me for review for the October business meeting. That means we never had a contract. What I did not do is commit the district to more than three hundred thousand dollars because that could have me here for termination. What I did ask the team is, was there any other way that we could spend the funds in alignment with houselessness or homelessness? They shared yes, and they began to do the research. What we have asked the state to do is allow us to still allocate the funds in a different way that did not require a contract. The state honored that. The team spent hours finding funds and expenditures that we utilize before September thirtieth to utilize these funds on a reimbursable basis. We never received a grant. The grant was for a reimbursable expense for anything connected to homelessness.
I feel, I know what's carrying on that. Yeah.
As it concerns a check from school seed, Leadership Development Institute took place in July. The district requested the funds that were solicited on our behalf from school seed to be given to the district. Donations in policy above fifteen thousand require the board's approval. The individual who receives it stated it as an oversight. I owned it as superintendent because, again, everything sits with the superintendent. I asked the board on record, may I have the will of the board to have the conversation with the administration, this particular team member offline, because I wanted to respect my team. The bo, the board honored that. I had the conversation. I gave grace. We talked about a better way forward and how we don't have these types of oversights again. That individual is in the room, and I still respect the team member. We sent the funds back because it was not worth public scrutiny. The funds sit with school seed, still available to be utilized for Leadership Development Week as they were originally allotted. Nothing took place out of order. The third claim about overtime, I shared with the board about overtime, and I think I started with this, that the district, in my review with the team, demonstrated excessive payments in overtime. I never accused an employee. I never accused any individual. What I did share is that would require an investigation, and that was not my desire. What I did share is that offered an opportunity to institute and implement better processes and protocols and practices so that we are better fiscal responsible, fiscally responsible with the funds that are given to us. Five point five million dollars from July twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four were paid out in overtime. As of today, we have, we are nowhere near that. That came from implementing better processes and protocols and folks like security, transportation, nutrition, and anyone else that still needs overtime. I look at the report every month, they still receive overtime. Overtime has not been declined or denied. It is a simple way to manage the funds that the district is responsible for.
I'm, I'm, I'm sure, did, did y'all just wake up and decide, okay, we're gonna fire the superintendent?
Yeah.
That they?
I'm, no, I.
Right.
I can only speak.
Right, yes. Yeah, what, what, what? You know, i- and so this, has this been something that has been built up over, you know, some, you know, some months or, you know, something that, that got you, got you to this point to where? Right, but, but, but how did you get to the point of being willing to say the vote yes to terminate this contract?
I will explain that next.
Uh, understood, understood.
Because I have to get my set.
Right.
I'm capable of it.
Check. Okay, 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 cuz, cuz I was saying that, you know, to the people that were saying that, I think, I think people think that y'all just woke. Because, because I was saying that, you know, to the people that were saying that, I think, I think people think that y'all just woke up and, and not necessarily arbitrarily, um, you know, got up and said, okay, this is the day we're gonna fire the superintendent, right? I think that's what people think, right? And, 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 and I've, you know, I've been explaining to people, I just, I just, I just, I just refuse to believe that, you know, that they just woke up and, and said, hey, y'all, we're gonna fire the superintendent, right? You know, and, and that there has to have been something to, to make five, which is the majority, or it was, or six, which was the majority of board members say, hey, we want to terminate this contract.
Okay, and this is a question, in my opinion, as I've asked. If you can't have conversation, private chamber, to make a decision. So then, how did the five or six, whatever, come to do it, to make the decision without? You don't talk about like, how are you even aware that this decision is gonna happen if you don't have the conversation outside of the public? And then like, do you keep like a, like a correction sheet? Like you, you have like your bylaws, I know y'all, y'all work on bylaws. You say, okay, if you mess, mess up two of these bylaws, that's enough of grounds to say, you know, you gotta, you gotta get out. Or it just still, it's still not, it's still not adding up to me. And that's just me not having no government, nothing, just a regular person. It's still like to fire somebody, it's like with no chance to fix it. That's like a relationship, eight months, you say she'll only be here eight months. In a relationship, that's like the honeymoon stage, you're learning each other. Yeah, she's a poor communicator. Has anybody ever told her, maybe Memphis is a different culture? People ain't straight up all the time, like Memphis, Miss foe is gonna tell you what it is, but maybe where she from, nobody had the balls to tell her like, oh, you can lose your job. See, I don't know. See, that's, yeah, see, and she.
Don't know what's going on.
Yes.
Because we go out and we make a united front.
Okay, show a united front, yeah.
Our business in the background. We go out and recreate a united front because it is for the kids. No personal agenda. I don't have no, uh, any personal agenda. I am here to serve my community and everybody is not going to agree with me. And that's okay. But at the end of the day, I am here to serve my community. And the naysayers and the people that disagree with me can't say that about my community. I am here day in and day out to serve my community.
I think it may make it hard because it's almost like when you're with a group of people and you have, your motives are pure. And I don't know, I don't know if other people don't have that same motive. Because it's so many stories, I'm in PR, it's about what it looked like and how it was perceived. There's so many things, I saw, as I researched, I was looking online, I was looking, looking at comments. It has something to do with like contracts. Are y'all, is, is the board really mad because somebody has a contract with somebody and now she's looking at cutting contracts? And they're cutting and they're getting, you know, and somebody, a friend or whatever. There's, there's motive behind that. Or if, it's, it's a whole bunch of other things that I feel like there's things that's tied to it that makes it like, it's messier than what it needs to be. And I think that day, y'all weren't given the opportunity to actually say what it was. Because the, what it is, is really, is not adding up. One plus one ain't two, it's like, one plus one is like negative forty-five. I'm like, damn, what can, I would say, damn. What can you, what? I know, I don't even curse, I said, damn, y'all, I'm sorry. It's like, what, because I look at fine as the most extreme, but I mean, I may be a graceful person. Because I feel like you, when you were new, when you first started your job at the school board, do you think you did everything right in your first eight months? Okay, that's what I'm saying, like, you willing, oh, the willingness. Okay, there, yeah, it's like, okay, I got you.
I don't know everything. I have been on the board for years. I don't know everything.
Yeah. And I think, and there's, people knew like three, people that were there three months and they haven't, I guess, at least get, like, get trained, get your feet wet. I personally would be like, let me get trained, get my feet wet, let me know everything I need to know. Now, back to earlier, I'm not sure if that was the first, when that got messed up. If I always, if I look at people on my team and there's something that's happening, I'm gonna look back at me and my communicate, not, not you seven. My communication style and say, okay, what am I doing that this is not getting through to that person? Maybe it's something that we can try to do, but like you said, the person has to be receptive to it. But there's a lot of conversation that's happening and. Yeah.
And I am willing to work with the superintendent and the board members.
You're watching the Antonio Parkinson Project.
Yeah.
To get the district, uh, students what they need. The motion failed, I was on the losing side.
Yeah, and you want, yeah. She is, there, it's just a, it's a, the grace and mercy, the grace and mercy point. And I just, and that's with me not knowing anything and that's wanting to ask that question, I know what's going on behind me and find out. Because everybody, and I think it's just a culture thing, they think some shady is always going on, like the, the black women bashing each other and all that. And with that being said, how do you handle all the backlash and comments in the line? Do you mute your comments? Do you, do you snap back? I don't know, I'll follow you. Do you say anything or do you mute them? You read them all?
I don't read them all. Because people don't know me.
Yeah.
And the ones that do, they know me. Everybody is not going to agree with me and I don't leave no sleep over there.
And, and, you know, honestly, that's the.
That's easier said than done, I'm sorry, y'all. Everybody don't, everybody don't have it, I'm sorry.
Wait, on the side or your back?
Please, but I'm saying, everybody can't handle that, you get it?
Nothing new for me.
But I'm saying, everybody can't handle screwing me and stuff, that's a lot.
Everybody had something to say and I still showed up to do my job. There going to be naysayers all the time. When I voted to uh keep Dr. Ray, there were naysayers. I was on the losing side.
I didn't know that. I didn't even know that.
And I still showed up a week later to handle the business of the board.
Yeah.
This is nothing personal.
And I think that's what a lot of people think, they think it's personal. When you see black women and find a black woman, they, they automatically think it's, there's a personal, there's an agenda, there's like some kind of agenda. But people like scandal, so I'm just, yeah, I don't know.
You know, interesting that, that you said, you know, there, there was, there was the, the, a lot of commentary about, you know, attacking a black woman, right? And they were saying that the school board was attacking a black woman. But you didn't say a word, not just that, not just that. But tho- those that were in the crowd were attacking black women that were on the board, right? And so, and you, you can't, you can't thread that needle like that and say, it's okay, you know, you're saying that the school board is attacking Dr. Fagans without saying that the crowd was attacking the female school board members.
That's true.
You know, because they're all women, most of them, except for.
Besides two, two, two men, two men. Yeah, like I messed up, like he made me nervous, like I was, only two.
Somebody, somebody, you know, somebody kind of reached out to me in, in the comments and say, hey, there are comments on YouTube, because I wasn't monitoring, my bad, y'all. But uh, this, uh, Calvin Nell says, the real question is, uh, how did the board go from creating an evaluation criteria to terminating someone? Also, why spend funds, uh, let me see what he's saying, wait a minute. Why, um, spend funds on, damn, I said spend, why spend funds on to bring outside consultation and produce nothing? So let me go back to the first question was, how did, how did, uh, the board go from creating an evaluation criteria to terminating someone?
We did, um, break that overnight.
Got you.
That is a policy.
Okay.
But I'm, as long as I have been on the school board.
Right.
We in London.
Got you.
But that is a policy within her contract.
Okay.
The superintendent before her didn't have that policy in it.
See, people may not know that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, say that one more time for the people in cheap seats. Say it one more time.
Former superintendents didn't have that policy embedded in their contract.
Okay, but, but in this contract, it is, yes.
See, nobody knew that.
I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of information that, that, that people are missing and, and.
Do it on a certain date.
Yeah, and, and, and I think it's, I think it's important for people to know too that, you know, this is why, you know, people feel, some people feel the way they feel and feel like the superintendent is being bullied or, or, or picked upon. Because a lot of information that's behind the scenes is just not out there, right? And, and, and so, and, and that's why we did show, you know, so that we can air all of the information, not on no conspiracy shit, right? Not on no, uh, somebody's contract was getting, getting killed, so that's why they going after superintendent. Somebody got fired, that's why they going after superintendent. But let's, let's talk about that for a second though. Let's talk about the people that got fired, right? And, you know, and, 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 and we never wish that on anyone. And now, we, we, I think we all agree, well, I don't want to speak for anyone else. We, we know that, that, well, I know, I feel like Shelby County Schools was top heavy, right? Okay, and you do too. You feel like Shelby County, so there, you felt like there needed to be some cuts?
Yeah.
Okay, so school board member feels like, felt like there needed to be some cuts, right? Okay, with the plan, and that's vitally important. Do you feel like there were cuts without a plan?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, now let's talk about that though too. So watch, y'all, watch this, y'all follow me on this, right? Now, people were fired from their jobs, right? A lot of people, how many people, did we? We know?
At least, I don't know.
Just ballpark.
Four hundred.
So, so four.
A lot of those, uh, positions were S R funded.
Like grant, was it grant money?
Lose their job.
Anyway, okay.
That's what somebody said, it was grant funding money, the grant money was going away anyway.
Right, right, okay, so.
Hundred of them were not, um, they were in the actual budget.
Got you. See, that piece of information.
Is important to know.
Yeah.
People think that the superintendent is just over here slashing jobs.
Yeah.
But that grant money was going away, those jobs were going to go away anyway.
Yeah.
Right, now, and so, and so, here, here's, here's the thing about, about being an elected official, right? And y'all just wa- watch me, wa- walk with me on this. So, you, I'm an elected official, right? And let's say, for instance, Amazon is in my district. Let's say, for instance, Amazon is going to close. There are, there are over twelve, there are over two thousand jobs at, at Amazon, right? When those people are about to lose their job, I get the call. Then, especially, and if they are my constituents, I have to fight for my constituents to be employed. Now, those people that were losing their jobs probably called their school board members. And their school board members, and they expected their school board members, who they voted for, to fight for them to keep their jobs. That's called constituent services.
Okay, now, it's okay.
Now, now, and so, think about, think about that dynamic though. So you got a superintendent who's, who's cutting jobs and some of the jobs are going away for S R fund because the S R funding is going away. A lot of people didn't know that.
Yeah.
Maybe some of them folks that were in them jobs might not even know that.
Yeah.
And, and so.
Told the previous administration to have a conversation with the import. When the S R funding runs out, their job is not guaranteed. Uh, plenty of departments apply for grant funding and put them in the budget, but not all.
But the problem also is that the previous administration was terminated early.
Yeah.
And so that word might not have actually got out. So, so I just want everybody to see, all of these dynamics that are taking place within Shelby County Schools, right? And, 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 you know, and so there are so many different things that are in the weeds of all of this, right? And, 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 you know, that, that also have to be considered.
And that they can't maybe speak on, like, you're not gonna be able to be privy to all information. And I'm gonna say this because I'm led to say that, I was thinking about this on the way here, that there was over thirty-six thousand people on that YouTube. There's probably more, there's probably more than thirty-six thousand, they might, something like that. And how many people came out and voted for y'all to, to E S C? Some digital was like twelve hundred, three hundred, something, it wasn't that much, it was like five, at, the numbers I seen. So I just tell people, the same energy you get online, some of y'all didn't even come vote. Y'all didn't, y'all using your, it's accountability, because the only thing we could do is take accountability for self. We could point fingers all day, we can go around in circles and say blah, blah, blah. But what do we do for these people that you put in these positions? Because even if you did not vote, you still made a choice that led them there. So you're using your voice after the fact. Not saying everybody, but you are using your voice. Next time, use your voice and vote, and even the board members. Y'all put Dr. Fagans there, I'm so nervous, Sarah, there, and y'all made the choice to pick her. It's almost like everybody dealing with the picking. Yeah, yeah, I'm saying, everybody dealing with pickings. I feel like, we feel like we dealing with the pickings of what we chose and it's just like, that's, that's what it, what it is. I mean, that's where we at right now.
So, so I think this, I think this is a fair question, and I want to ask it. And, and, and Sydney, we're not gonna base anything on rumor.
Why my own phone is not loading, I can't see no comments.
I think Cheryl, Cheryl, Cheryl Piggies pride asked this and, and so did Jason Sharif. They said, uh, uh, Dr. Ray was completely out of order and yet, or, or violated policy, and yet you voted to. Okay, well, let me, let me finish the question before, before you answer. So they said, Dr. Ray was completely out of order and, or, or, you know, violating policy, and yet you voted to keep him on. Dr. Fagans accepted the responsibility and yet the board wanted her removed immediately. Make it make sense, that's, that was the question.
Dr. Ray didn't violate a policy. We had him investigated internally first and he resigned after we, uh, outside lawyer investigated him. He was investigated first through HR and they found no wrongdoing.
Okay.
The board had an outside lawyer to investigate him further.
Okay.
Because we heard claims that he violated a policy.
Okay, all right, but there's, there's an answer to that. And so, I, I, and I, I'm asking that because I don't want people to think that we're coming over here throwing softballs and trying to be, you know, biased, you know, you know, with, you know. And, and, and as an elected official, I think that it is vitally important that you are prepared for everything. You know, we didn't, we didn't prepare her for that question, you know, y'all asked that question.
Another question that asked you, you didn't know how to ask you.
Yeah, right, absolutely right, absolutely right. So what, what do we go from here? What, what's, what's next?
We have the committee meeting next year.
Okay.
And you're going to have to wait to see what evidence is provided. The board members' statements, um, I don't know.
Right, okay, are, are you, are you okay with how the meeting ended? And, and where, and the, the, um, issue being pushed to January?
No, I wasn't because that's not how policy works, and her contract doesn't state that.
Right.
But I am only one vote and I lost.
Right.
So the will of the board is to have a committee meeting next month. And that's how, uh, uh, school boards work.
Right.
We don't win all the time and it is a vote and I lost.
I have a question, is there anything in that day that you would have done different? I have two questions, and is there something that you didn't get to say? I know you didn't say nothing the whole time, but is there something that you wish you could have said? Or is there something that could have been done differently that day to get the point across, to, you know, lead to whatever result y'all wanted that day? That makes sense. That's two questions.
The crowd, the crowd was very disruptive and the people that voted with me couldn't get their point across. I didn't prepare a speech, a talking point because I let my vote do the talking.
Okay, there it is.
That's fair, let me, let me ask this last question, and, and, and again, thank you for, for coming on the show.
Even coming, yeah, to come, that takes a lot.
And, and, and helping to, to, you know, clarify a lot of stuff for a lot of people. Wha- what will be done, what will be done differently in the next school board me- meeting so that there is order?
I talked to Joyce and I talked to Tito, who was over secure. Um, Tito assured me that there would not be disruption.
They're saying, speak up.
Tito assured me that there will not be disruption again. And, uh, Joyce is going to talk to the commentary. And, uh, Joyce is going to talk to the parliamentarian.
Right.
The parliamentarian and the chair run the meeting.
Right.
They do that, uh, together. There was several things that I thought could have been done better. But we had a special call meeting, an executive session that only lasted twenty-five, thirty minutes. But we didn't get to talk it out the same way we did jurisprudence.
Right. Okay. You know, you know, with, with, with the budget as big as it is with, with Shelby County schools, you know, uh, and, and there's, there is an outcry of, of people in the public that says that, you know, you know, we cannot have another, uh, fiasco like this. I mean, you know, you're talking about an organization with over a billion dollar budget, right? And to see it, um, descend into the chaos, um, that it descended in, uh, what do you say to those people?
There were more adults than there were children. I go to the state house every year. And I rarely agree with your counterparts. And I don't have a fool.
In.
I go to the city council.
Yes, step up to me.
I go to the city council meeting and the county commission meeting. And I don't agree with them, but I have class. And I, uh, express my frustration in the car, walking in the elevator.
On my phone?
On your phone. And I didn't mean to say those folks don't have class. Because I would never, uh, talk about my constituents or anybody else. They were too loud.
Right.
And they caused, uh, disturbance in a board meeting that was do, uh, that was called to handle business.
Yeah, yeah.
I have one more question. What do you say to people, this G. Parkinson, he don't know this question's coming, that believe y'all family are in a cahoots with each other? Do y'all, do you ever disagree with anything Parkinson says? No, I want to put it out there.
No, no, I, I think this.
Did you? No, you know, but I'm, I'm, I'm.
They think y'all cahoots.
Answer this question. I'm biting at the bit to answer this question.
Well, I want you because right now you're in line like you.
I disagree with him daily.
They think y'all in the cahoots?
Yes.
And y'all go, you in back and forth. I'm just gonna say that. What you say to that?
I disagree with him daily.
Okay.
Man, listen, let me tell you something. Y'all, y'all, what I don't understand is me and Charlie Caswell are surrounded by three or four women that we have to listen to every single day. All of them try to boss us around.
Oh, God.
Real talk, real talk. And, and listen, and we, I'm trying to tell y'all, yes, we support each other, you know, but we, 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 we are not always in agreement with, with, you know, policy.
Yeah.
With strategy.
Okay.
And direction.
Well, there it is.
And man, and it'd be some.
We argue behind closed doors.
Yeah.
And we, uh, put on in the united front in public.
Yeah.
I think we are friends.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and you know, here, and, and, and this would be a perfect close for the show because, and, you know, and I think it's important for everybody to understand this. It's okay to disagree.
Yeah.
It's not okay to bully. It's not okay to make mockery. It's not okay to threaten, right? And, and, but it's okay to disagree.
Yeah.
The, the, you know, and, and, and people might not see this, but there is a, a silver lining in the fact that that meeting happened, right? We are having a multiple discussions that are going on, right? Accountability discussions when it comes to the board, when it comes to the superintendent, and when it comes to the public that is in attendance, right? We're also having, you know, real and true discussions. This came out of this in regards to who is responsible for us? Whose job is it to fix this? These are good conversations, but it doesn't need to be just conversations. There needs to be solutions that come out of these conversations.
I want to say.
Step up.
Yesterday, eighty-one schools improved on the Shelby County list, letter grade.
Let's give it up for that. Yeah, that's good. That's good. Good stuff.
So we are doing the work. Next month, on the night, it is official groundbreaking ceremony for Frazier High School.
Let's give it up for that, man.
It's going to be called Frazier High School. That is where the school is located.
What's it gonna be called?
Uh, look how he looking.
I don't know. That is a board decision.
Oh.
Not mine.
Okay.
The policy states that, um, a committee has to be formed and they bring the top three recommendations for the board to load on.
No, it can't be called the Antonio Parkinson High School.
It could. It could, it could be called the Antonio Parkinson Project High School. Right.
Can I say this too? And we all need a little grace, okay? Polly Per- shut up. But Parkinson call me Polly Perhart.
Polly Perhart.
But we do, we just need a little grace. I'm gonna put out, maybe just a probationary period or a second chance, cause eight months, y'all, eight months. But I don't know. I don't know. I don't.
I agree with you.
Oh, Lord, oh, God. Jesus, did you hear me that? You answered?
See that? See that?
They made my night. Okay, I guess now, now.
Dr. Fagans need to be sending you, sending you.
I never even, I never even, I seen her one time at one of your meetings.
Well, she, she's been invited to the show multiple times.
I'm telling you, I seen her one time. I never, I don't have no cahoots with nobody, never. And I just see it and just, I just think everybody just needs.
Yeah. And I, and, and, and to your point, I think, I think, I, 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 I agree with you.
Oh, Lord. Oh, double agreements. Oh, Lord, okay.
I, I hope that, I, my, 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 my hope is that we work this out amicably. You know, that we do not call on a white man to fix our problems.
God, we've had to go left for two things.
And we prove to ourselves that we are worthy of solving our own problems and we are smart enough to solve our own problems. We have brilliant people in Shelby County school system. I look, look at Dr. Rod Richman and, and he is brilliant. Uh, Marie Fagans, Dr. Marie Fagans, I don't want to slight her. She is smart, very, very smart, right? And the school board members, I think they are incredibly capable. Angela Whitelaw, you know, we got more doctors in Shelby County schools than, than, than in the hospital. Right? And so I think that we are very, very capable of, of working through this. But I think it is ours. We own it. Let's fix it.
Yes, I'm excited.
Y'all can clap for that. Thank you for that. And with that, y'all, make sure you hit that like, subscribe button, hit that share button. You know, you've been watching the Antonio Parkinson Project and we'll see you by next show.
You're watching the Antonio Parkinson Project.